Okay, good evening and welcome to the Johnson City Press's Community Town Hall Meeting on the merger of Wellmont Health System and Mountain States Health Alliance. I am Robert Houck, I'm the Opinion Page Editor for Johnson City Press, and I will be your moderator for this forum. We want to thank East Tennessee State University for allowing us to use the auditorium tonight, and for helping us with the live streaming that's going on as we speak. We are pleased to have our panelists here tonight because, I don't know if you've heard, but Wellmont and Mountain States took the first steps today to obtaining a regulatory authority of this merger. They have filed a letter of intent with Tennessee Department of Health indicating that two organizations will submit an application on or about November 1st for a certificate of public advantage. Now, what is that? We'll get into that a little later. To become one single entity, the two organizations have also submitted a similar letter of intent to the Southwest Virginia Health Authority, which begins the COPA process there. Again, I want to thank our panelists for being here tonight, and answer our questions about the merger, which have been sent to us via email, social media, and our website. We will also be taking questions that have been submitted now on Twitter, and you can go to their, our Twitter account is hashtag #mergertalk. Sam Watson, our news editor, is down there, he's the one doing the twittering. And we have a few questions from the audience, very good questions, by the way. I thought we'd actually had all the questions, good questions come in earlier today, but thank you for being here tonight, you've asked some very good questions as well. We also ask our panelists to be brief in their answers. I'll be serving as something of a traffic cop tonight, I will try to keep the conversation going. However, if there's a question that really needs or deserves a little more time, we will give it that time. Our goal is to get as many questions as possible in. At the end of the evening, I will ask the panelists to kind of take a few minutes to make a, kind of wrap things up, if we have time. We may, if we still have questions, we may make that brief as well. Let me introduce our panelists tonight. Beginning at my far right is Bart Hove, President and CEO of Wellmont Health System. Earlier in his Wellmont career, he served as President of Bristol Regional Medical Center for 12 years. He has 38 years of healthcare management experience, with 32 years spent serving as CEO in various hospitals and organizations. He is a member of the Board of Directors of the Tennessee Hospital Association and the Hospital Alliance of Tennessee. Seated in the middle is Alan Levine, he is President and CEO of Health, Mountain States Health Alliance. He has served more than 20 years as a hospital, in hospital operations and experience. He has served as CEO in a hospital in rural North Town of Perry, and he went on to supervise the fifth-largest public not-for-profit health system in the nation. He has served as Louisiana Governor Bobby Jindal's cabinet as Secretary of Louisiana's Department of Health and Hospitals, and as Governor's Senior Health Policy Advisor. He has also served as Deputy Chief of Staff and Senior Health Policy Advisor to former President, I'm the former President, former Governor Jeb Bush. And we are pleased to have Dr. Brian Nolan, President of East Tennessee State University, with us. Dr. Nolan became the ninth president of ETSU in 2012. Before coming to Johnson City, he served six years as Chancellor of West Virginia Higher Education System. Part of that, he has served as Associate Executive Director for Tennessee Higher Education Commission, where his job duties included the development and implementation of the Tennessee Education Lottery System. He has also served as an adjunct faculty member at Vanderbilt, Nashville State Community College, and Tennessee State University. Thank you all for being here. We will begin with a brief statement from each of you, and again, I'll remind you, we want to keep it as under three minutes. We'll begin with Mr. Hove.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank all of you for being here tonight, and for those of you who are watching at home on the web, we certainly do appreciate you taking time. We know that you recognize that this is the only public forum that's really going on today, and so we'll try to entertain you as well as provide answers to your important questions. I'd also like to thank Robert and the Johnson City Press for taking the initiative to host the opportunity for us to share our wonderful vision that we have laid out before you today. And then additionally, I want to thank Dr. Nolan as well, and ETSU for providing the auditorium to host the program tonight. And let me begin by saying that I'm excited to be here. I'm excited for a number of different reasons. First and foremost, as was mentioned, I'm a 15-year resident of the tri-cities. I'm very proud of that fact, and very fortunate to have been able to live here in a wonderful community that has great healthcare today. My children also grew up here, and graduated from high school here, they call this home, and they do come back to visit occasionally when they get time away from their studies at their colleges that they're in right now. But we're very proud of the medical communities that we currently have. Personally, I get my healthcare here, I have my eyes checked here, I have my teeth checked here, and also have all my medical needs and my surgeries taken care of within this region. As was mentioned, I've been CEO of many different hospitals across the southeastern United States. I do call this home, and I do call this my medical community of choice, because we have excellent physicians, we have excellent caregivers, and we have excellent facilities to provide that care in. It's even more exciting to be a part of the message that we're bringing forward to you tonight, and that is about the proposed and proposed merger of our two organizations, and the pursuit of that merger, and what it means to our communities. So as your neighbor, it's important for me to recognize the value that you place on healthcare that's delivered in our region, and what that means to you, what that means to our economy. But we know that we are a very large employer in the region, and we do not take that responsibility lightly. It's very important for us, and the roles that we play, and the relationships that we have with our Chamber of Commerce, our business executives and leaders in the market, and in the community, to make sure that we do act responsibly and deliver our healthcare in a quality-oriented fashion. We want to continue to express our vision to you tonight, and share the thoughts and ideas that we have going forward. We want to answer your questions. It's very important for us to maintain an open dialogue and a transparent dialogue with the communities in which we serve, because we know that we are here at your pleasure, and we certainly want to make sure that we meet those needs. The more our organizations work together, the more we are confident of achieving our goals and objectives, of being able to work together in a rapidly-changing healthcare environment, providing a new approach to the delivery of healthcare and improving the healthcare of our region. For more than a year, our board has been pursuing its strategic options process, which ultimately led us to the conclusion, after looking at many different options, that what was important to our communities that we serve is local control, local ownership, local decisions, board members who are your neighbors making key decisions that have your best interests in mind. We said from the very beginning that as a merger of equals, an integrated and locally governed healthcare system designed to be among the best in the nation, and will address serious healthcare issues that do affect our region.
Mr. Hove?
Can you wrap it up here? I will wrap up, I'll be very quickly covering a few more points, and that is, again, what was important to us today in filing our letter of intent, which begins the process, as we've talked about going forward with our COPA application. And those decisions were reached last night at a joint board meeting, and the information that came back from the State Commissioner of Health, Dr. Dreisner, I happened to look down at the bottom of the page, and I read with interest the mission statement of the Department of Health in Tennessee, and it states, "Protect, promote, and improve the health and prosperity of people in Tennessee." And the only thing that I would add to that that is important to us is we add Virginia to the bottom statement, that's exactly what we're trying to do. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Levine?
Well, thank you. First of all, you know, as I look out tonight in this auditorium, I see people that are very invested in the healthcare system here, and I see Louie Gump, I see some doctors from Virginia, folks from Wellmont, this is important. And what's going on in the healthcare environment right now, by the way, probably the most important group that's here tonight are students, who are here to learn kind of what's going on in the healthcare landscape, it's changing dramatically. As we sit here tonight, five of the largest national insurers are in the middle of mergers. Anthem is acquiring Cigna, Aetna is buying Humana. And the net result of all this consolidation that's happened, that's happening, is large hospital systems, large multi-state hospital systems are acquiring smaller ones like ours. And we've taken a lot of time to look at what are the effects of those types of activities in the marketplace, and what we found is, a couple of things occur when large multi-state hospital systems acquire smaller ones like ours. Number one, we've seen loss of local governance, where decisions about healthcare are not made locally, but they're made by another organization based somewhere else that has their own fiduciary responsibility to their balance sheet, and not to your community. Two, what we've seen through studies that have been done by universities, on site one, Clemson and University of Alabama did a study that showed of 350 out-of-market mergers of systems like ours, prices actually went up for consumers after those mergers. So loss of local governance, higher prices, and probably one of the most important things to this region that we were concerned about is loss of local jobs. Acquisitions of hospital systems like ours results in loss of a lot of jobs that go outside the region. And it's not that that's wrong, it's not that that's improper, that's just the way it is, that's what we've seen happen. And we don't think, we didn't think that that was the best thing for the community here in this region. So we stepped back and said, what do we think is a better alternative to that? And you know, it didn't, you didn't have to look far, all we had to do was take a 10, 15-minute drive over to Kingsport and realize, we have a great partner right across the tri-cities in Wellmont. Now, the current environment we have today, both Wellmont and Mountain States have been forced by federal cuts to Medicare, to cut our cost structure, we've had to cut residency slots, we've had to reduce the size of our workforce to deal with the cuts in the revenue from Medicare. Seventy percent of our payment comes from the government. And so when Medicare makes cuts like that, it has a huge effect on our system. Again, so what is the alternative? We felt the alternative was by partnering together, identifying efficiencies between our two systems, we can keep governance local, we can keep decisions local, we can make decisions about what's best for our region and the healthcare needs of our region, and probably even most importantly, in addition to the great quality of care and reducing the overall growth in the cost of care, we have partners in the academic setting, right here at ETSU and others, that we partner with to train doctors and other allied health professionals.
Mr. Levine, we need to wrap it up.
All right. But we also see a huge opportunity to diversify our local economy by investing in research. And I'm going to let Dr. Nolan talk more about that, but we're talking about a major transformation in growing the opportunity to do research between our two systems, and between the footprint of this region. We have tremendous opportunity to become ultra-competitive nationally for new and advanced types of research that we're not currently doing today. And we're excited about that, and we think that this combined system lends itself to that. And so I look forward to talking more about that.
Thank you. Dr. Nolan?
Well, first let me thank the press, let me thank Mountain States and Wellmont, and all of you in the audience for joining us in this conversation this evening. On behalf of the 14,700 students and 2,600 faculty and staff who call East Tennessee State University home, I'm honored to represent them tonight. And it's fitting that we're meeting in a building named for President D.P. Culpey, an individual who during his tenure was tasked with implementing and launching a College of Medicine here on our campus. Fast forward 40 years later, that's a college of medicine that has graduated more than 1,800 physicians, it's a college of medicine that's ranked nationally for its ability to produce physicians who focus on rural and family practice, and it's a college of medicine that, working together with our partners, has transformed healthcare in East Tennessee. If you look at other elements of our Academic Health Sciences Center, we have the largest college of nursing in the state of Tennessee, which is celebrating its 60th anniversary this year, a college of nursing that produces nurses that are the backbone of these two hospitals. And if you go across all of the programs in our Academic Health Sciences Center, what you find is that those programs are here because of the investments that these two hospitals and that the community as a whole have made in this institution. I'm fond of describing ETSU as the land grant for Appalachia. And last night, in the course of reading material in preparation for tonight's presentation, I ran across an article that talked about the evolution of the new land grant. And for those of you who are not familiar with the phrase "land grant," in the late 1890s, the Morel Act was passed, in which the federal government made investments in institutions, institutions that would focus on agriculture to transform the economies of their region. We were an institution formed in 1911 for a singular purpose, and that was to improve the quality of life of the people of the state of Tennessee. But the article that talked about land grants described the new land grant, and that's an institution with a diverse Academic Health Sciences Center. And the new land grants improve the quality of life of people of their region through focuses on healthcare and focuses on translational and biomedical research. That's what I see as the main byproduct of this merger, is the opportunity for the resources that if these two entities had sold to out-of-state companies, that would have gone elsewhere to be invested locally to transform the economy of this region, just as 40 years ago, we transformed the economy of this region through the advent of the Quillan College of Medicine. Thank you all again for being on our campus.
Thank you. As you can tell, our panelists are very enthusiastic and vocal about this merger, and that's good. Again, we're, I don't want to be rude, but I'm going to be the traffic monitor tonight. Now we'll get to the questions. As I noted earlier, many of these were submitted before tonight's meeting, some are also from the Johnson City Press editorial board. Our questions have been screened based on their relevance because of our time and the limited time we have, we have selected questions that have been asked most by the audience. In other words, there's a few things that people really want to know about. And we will begin with a question that has been asked quite a bit today. What is a certificate of public advantage process? What's that all about? And remember to be as brief as possible. What is a COPA?
The certificate of public advantage is, it was a statute that was just passed, or updated this year in Tennessee, and in Virginia, a similar statute was passed that is basically the same thing, an agreement between the state and the health system. Federal antitrust laws are very important, they're intended to protect competition. And the certificate of public advantage is basically, there's one element of federal antitrust law that's 75 years of case law supports, and that is what's called state action immunity, where, under the federal guidelines, and as affirmed recently by the United States Supreme Court, states can also regulate in the antitrust environment, in the competitive environment. It doesn't have to be the federal government. So the COPA statute is the state's opportunity to establish what its policy is with respect to competition, and how it's going to actively supervise the system that is seeking the certificate of public advantage. The certificate of public advantage basically allows the state to assess, will this merger have public benefits that are substantial enough that it merits supplanting competition with regulation? And we believe that as we've gone through this process and talked about what we think the distinctive public benefits of this are going to be, that there's going to be a clear and convincing case for the approval of this certificate of public advantage. So just to be clear, we are 100% focused on complying with federal law, this is federal law, and there's 75 years of case law supporting what we're doing. And one last thing, there's actually been an example fairly in the last 20 years in this region where this has been done successfully, and that's in Asheville, where the two health systems there merged about 20 years ago, under a certificate of public advantage that is regulated by North Carolina.
Mr. Levine, isn't it true, as of today, they're even talking about disbanding that agreement?
I'm not aware, well, the legislature in North Carolina, as recently as two years ago, reviewed the certificate of public advantage of mission, and affirmed that they were complying with it. And in fact, the cost per admission, the cost per adjusted admission at mission, and this is the state's data, not missions, the cost per adjusted admission at mission is actually lower than all of its peer competitor hospitals in North Carolina, and their revenue, their charges per adjusted admission are actually lower than their peer averages in North Carolina, than all their peer hospitals in North Carolina. So the COPA was even evaluated by the Urban Institute, and they found that it was a very good alternative to federal oversight, as opposed to having the state do the oversight. So we think it's a pretty good model that's been done even recently.
Can you address another concern that I've heard, we've heard, had a lot of questions about? There's some folks who think that this COPA process is an effort to circumvent the Federal Trade Commission, of this being examined by the Federal Trade Commission.
To the contrary, we're 100% focused on being compliant with federal law, and we're right in the middle of that lane. The state of Tennessee and the Commonwealth of Virginia have passed specific public law that has stated clearly the policy of the state is to permit this, and then to actively supervise it, which is absolutely 100%, not only in compliance with federal antitrust law, but also has been affirmed as recently as last year by the United States Supreme Court. So we're 100% focused on complying with it.
So what's next in the process? Where do you go from here?
Well, let me just add to that and say that the FTC is aware of the activities that we are exploring at this point in time, and they are monitoring that and working with our state agencies to ensure that we do follow the letter of the law as goes forward in relating to the COPA application.
So will there be public comment, how will the state regulators look at this? How will they evaluate this request?
There is a very defined process in the state of Tennessee that is currently operating under emergency rules, since the COPA law was just updated this past legislative session. Part of that process, in addition to the application that would be filed by Wellmont and Mountain States, is public input, public hearings in several different venues, so that we make sure that all of the communication and dialogue that does need to take place, and input that needs to be worked into the COPA application, and ultimately decided on by the state is included.
What's the estimated timeframe for the COPA process? Which, let's just say you got the green light, what would be the earliest might we see one single healthcare entity in this region?
Well, it's difficult to attach a direct timeline associated with a fluid process. But as was mentioned earlier, today, we did file a letter of intent in both Tennessee and the Commonwealth of Virginia, where we are seeking, it's not called a COPA in Virginia, it's called a cooperative agreement, but follows much the same process. And so we start with a letter of intent, which notifies the Attorney General and the Commissioner of Health that we will be filing a certificate of public advantage application within the timeframe that is established by the law. Right now, once the letter of intent is declared complete, then there is a 45-day period of time where we'll be putting our application together before we can actually file that. So no sooner than 45 days from when the letter is deemed complete. Then the state has their opportunity to review the application that we've put in, there'll be dialogue back and forth, there'll be public hearing input during the period of time of about 120 days in Tennessee and 150 days in Virginia. And we hope to sync those processes together so that there's not a whole lot of lag one way or the other. Then ultimately, we'll be awaiting the state's determination and decision associated with that. So if you projected that out on the shortest time period, you take 45 days and then add 150 days to that, to come to that conclusion. The way things normally operate, it takes a little bit longer than that at some point in time, it is a very complicated process, it's a lot of hard work to go through between now and then, and certainly the state offices are, their workload is also affected by this too, so we know that there'll be a lot of give and take.
Are the COPA rules generally the same in Tennessee and Virginia? Are they pretty much the same, similar?
The answer is, Tennessee established emergency rules when the legislature ended, and in parallel to establishing emergency rules, they also began the process of establishing permanent rules. The Tennessee rules are very, very robust, and it's very clear that the state of Tennessee intends to actively supervise and do the proper role that the state needs to do to make sure that we're complying with the law. Virginia is going through that process now, and the process seems to look very similar to what Tennessee has established.
Let me, oh, here, a question from Twitter, let's see if we can find one that's on the COPA, we'll come back to that. Technology's great, isn't it? What about, if you get the green light from the regulatory agencies here in Tennessee, is that the final word? Or in Tennessee and Virginia? If you get the COPA here in Tennessee and Virginia, is that, is that all you need? Anybody?
Well, I think that, first, the final word ultimately, in terms of whether we move forward, resides with the board of Wellmont and Mountain States. Once we negotiate the COPA, the boards have to decide finally, are they prepared to agree to the terms of the COPA? So I would say the final decision is really the boards. If the state of Tennessee approves a COPA and agrees to supervise it, we believe that should be the final word. The Federal Trade Commission obviously has the right to agree to that or not, but we think there's strong precedent, and certainly we're following the law, as is the state of Tennessee and the Commonwealth of Virginia. So we feel very confident with what we're doing and how we're doing it.
We might come back to this, but I'm going to move on to another question that's been asked very, a lot of times, and most folks have a question about, why is this not a monopoly? And they remember hearing this debated back in the years of turf wars and competition. In this case, we'll use an email sent to us from Susan in Knoxville, this is even getting generated interest all the way to Knoxville, way down the highway. "The trend of hospital monopolies is not unique to the tri-cities area. All around the country, local communities have seen hospital mergers go through, and without any real competition, costs have gone up. How is this proposal any different?" And I'll also add, and I think I heard you guys talking about this before we started, a lot of these people have commented on Robert Wood Johnson Foundation's, since this, I couldn't say that, project, which reviews such requests about mergers, and they've come to the conclusion they often result in serious harm in cost, serious harm to cost and quality of care. I want to take that one up.
Couldn't agree more, that's precisely why we've chosen the path we have. The models they're talking about, ironically, are models that have been permitted to go forward, where you've seen acquisitions of hospitals by other hospitals, those are unregulated acquisitions, and yes, pricing has gone up, quality has not improved, local governance disappears, and jobs are lost. And we think that's the wrong model. That's why what we've proposed to do is, again, we point to Mission in Asheville as the example, where costs actually went down, that hospital was named, that system is named three years in a row one of the top 15 health systems in the United States of America, and their pricing is lower than all of their unregulated peers in North Carolina. So what we've chosen is a model that is different than what you're, I think the lady from Knoxville asked about, but as opposed to saying what it's not, I think it's important to talk about what this is. We're talking about taking, if you look in this region, we admit about 120 patients per thousand population. The rest of the country, the average is anywhere from 90 to 110 patients per thousand. So we're admitting more patients per thousand because we have an unhealthier, we have a population that has poorer health, we have a lot of duplicate capacity between the two systems, and those two things combined create higher utilization and higher cost. And the only real way to do something about this from our perspective is to collaborate, to be smart about the capacity that we offer, so we're not unnecessarily duplicating cost. And we're actually creating opportunities to invest in services that today neither system by ourselves can afford to offer. And so what we see is an opportunity to eliminate unnecessary cost, and then invest in areas like mental health where we in areas like mental health where we know there's a dramatic need. Addiction, we have a huge problem with addiction in this region. And I could go on and on with opportunities to grow services that today by ourselves it's hard for us to do. So, this is very different than what other hospitals have done, where all they've done is merge, they've gotten, they've gotten, there's no regulatory system in place for them, and yes, costs went up, local governance disappeared, and jobs disappeared. We're doing exactly the opposite.
There's another couple of questions from Twitter that I think is interesting. One Twitter, one tweet asks, "What would prevent the combined system from selling, once it's, once it's, once you're merged? What would prevent you from selling to an outside entity down the road?" I guess people, you're better together now, how long can we expect you to be better together? I guess, I guess that's the question that somebody has asked on Twitter.
First of all, one thing that's really important is, once we agree to a COPA, that COPA, it binds this system for as long as that COPA's there. And so, even if the system, by the way, I can't imagine a scenario where we would do that, but we just, we can't predict what the future holds in terms of what Medicare's gonna do, what the insurance, you know, there's only gonna be three major insurance companies in the future with their mergers that are going on right now. And so, we can't predict what the future holds, but that, this COPA will be the governing document for this system for as long as that COPA is in existence. And I think that we can anticipate, that would be a very long time.
Another of the popular questions we've been getting is concerns of possible staffing and facility changes. People wanna know how many jobs might be lost as a result of this merger. They also wanna know if hospitals and clinics might be closed, or its mission, or their missions changed as a result of the merger. What can you say about these topics tonight? And if you can't comment, tell us why.
We recognize that that's one of the key questions that's on the minds of the communities that we currently serve in our region that we cover now. There is one key component, however, that prevents Mountain States and Wellmont from even talking about or discussing those items, and we mentioned it earlier, the Federal Trade Commission. We are currently under the auspices of the guidance of that organization, and as such, we're not able to have those types of distinct conversations at this current time in our merger process. We can talk about a lot of things, it just happens to be that services and staffing are one of those areas where it's determined by the FTC that it's not permissible to discuss.
At what point do you anticipate being able to talk about those things and publicly?
Once the COPA is approved and the Boards accept the regulations associated by the COPA document itself, and we come together as a merged organization, then we can have those conversations.
And I agree with everything Bart's saying. We have to be very careful, but one thing we can say, and let me just say it this way, 'cause I think, you know, good people beget good people. In order for our system to be successful, we have to be able to attract the best people and retain them. And our objective is to grow. Our objective is to grow the system. Right now, we're in a defensive posture, as the government's been cutting our reimbursements. We've both been cutting and paring back, and you've heard about it. We've frozen our residency slots this year, actually, last year, we started reducing. In fact, Mountain States has a plan to reduce 40 residency slots over the next five years. Wellmont has a plan to reduce some of theirs. And so, the environment we're in right now, we have seen job losses, and that's happening all over the country. Again, the alternative to that is by being, by working together and developing synergies where it makes sense, we can begin to invest in those things, like instead of cutting residencies, actually adding residencies. And so, I think it's important for our team members to understand, and for our doctors and nurses to know, we can't be successful without them. And that means we have to be ultra-competitive. If you think about this, to recruit new doctors to this region, we're competing with places like Charlotte, Atlanta, San Francisco, Boston. You know, when you're a doc, doctors are scientists, and doctors want to go to learning environments where they can grow their own profession, they can teach young students, medical students, they can participate in research. Today, thankfully, ETSU has research programs, and we have residency programs both at Wellmont and Mountain States, but we can't compete in an environment in the future where there's a diminishing number of doctors being trained. We've gotta be able to compete for these physicians, and the best way to do that, by collaborating, coming together, investing in research, and creating an environment, a laboratory environment where doctors see an opportunity to grow professionally, that's the best way we're gonna be able to be competitive in the future. Our plan is to grow, and when you grow, you need to hire people, and that's really what we're trying to do here.
And I wanna follow up on Alan's point, and he focused on the word coordination. One of the elements that I think is lost is the fact that if these two entities did not come together to realize the synergies, to realize the concept of local governance, that probabilities indicate they would have been merged with outside entities. Job loss would have occurred, resource loss would have occurred. By the two entities coming together, creating a permanence of local decision-making, East Tennesseans, Southwest Virginians will determine the answers to these solutions. Whereas if either one of these entities had merged with an outside source, someone in North Carolina, Virginia, or California would have been making those decisions on our behalf. So, I know that there are uncertainties through these questions, there's uncertainties at the institution with respect to what comes next. But for me, the source of stability is the fact that you'll have local control and local governance, and the ability for East Tennesseans to make decisions for themselves, as we have for the past 40 years when we made the decision to start the College of Medicine.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because a local nurse, Rebecca, emailed us a question. She said, "What is ETSU's agenda for supporting the merger between Mountain States and Wellmont Hospitals? What will the university gain?"
I think part of what the university will gain is stability. These two systems are our partners. They've been our partners for the better part of four decades. We have established academic programs, we've established residencies, we've established research programs together with Mountain States and Wellmont. So, by the two entities coming together, it provides permanence. For the past decade and a half, we've had to balance the agenda of one hospital system against the other hospital system. We've also had to balance the recognition that revenues for both were declining, and as Mr. Levine mentioned, our residency slots are scheduled to be reduced if this merger does not occur. Our residency slots are the lifeblood of a College of Medicine, and if we were to see a reduction of 40 residents, then that's the potential for 40 fewer physicians to move into our communities. So, the agenda for East Tennessee State University is to pursue our mission, that's to improve the life of the people of East Tennessee. Through research, we'll focus on the population health challenges. Through the education of people of this region, they will become the next generation of health professionals. So, our agenda is to meet our mission, which is to meet the needs of the people of this region.
Will there be major changes in the way the hospitals do the residency programs now? I mean, do you foresee anything down the road that might be more complicated by this?
I think the major change is rather than reducing residencies, you'll see us invest in the growth of residencies. Our focus has been in rural and family practice in the College of Medicine. We do not have the depth of a patient base because of the separation of the two systems to really grow subspecialties, and by working together with this system, you'll see us begin to grow, strengthen research, and strengthen patient care in the College of Medicine. A wonderful example is in place presently at the Nice Wonka Children's Hospital. Dr. Wood is Chair of the Department of Pediatrics, he is also Head of the Children's Hospital. We are growing subspecialists there, and as you look at the quality of care that's provided at Nice Wonka, that's better care for the people of the region because of the partnership between the two entities. And as this process unfolds, I think you'll see that replicated across other elements, not only in medicine, but in nursing, clinical and rehabilitative health studies, and in public health, which really will be the backbone of a lot of the population health work that's gonna come.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
The School of Public Health here is tremendously highly ranked. It's a very well-respected program nationally, and the research opportunities don't just reside in the College of Medicine. The opportunity, if you look throughout the region, the incidence of diabetes, heart disease, obesity, drug addiction, the list goes on, there's a tremendous opportunity for us to compete with other major universities that are competing for billions of dollars of research funding to study interventions, translational research, where we can learn what interventions work. And so, part of this, part of what we're prepared to commit to in the Certificate of Public Advantage is for ETSU collaborating, funded by us, by the combined system, to do a deep dive study of our region. So, we understand, community by community, what are the, what are the issues? Is it teen smoking? Is it child, is it child literacy? Is it obesity? Is it diabetes? What are the issues that are, that are driving the poor health? And what interventions can we deploy and study to see what works, so that we can share that knowledge with people all over the world? That's what we have the opportunity to do here in this region, and it can be extremely powerful and make us very competitive nationally.
There's, we just got a question on Twitter. The tweet says, "As a new nurse in May, why should I stay here where I was trained with all this uncertainty, instead of going to a stable facility somewhere else?" What's your answer?
Yeah, I would like to take that, because I think it dovetails on with the previous comments, and that is that, I dare say that within the Wellmont health system, that ETSU has provided us the single-source leader in physicians, nurses, allied health professionals trained to deliver the care within our system, which we are so sorely needing and wanting to recruit and continue to maintain employment with. The uncertainty gets solidified by the merger going forward in our abilities to evolve in this changing healthcare arena that we're in today. Healthcare's changing all across the country, and what we're focused on is our own local region with a lot of the questions that are being asked tonight, but if you look across the country, every locale is going through these same types of concerns and same types of changes. The partnership that we have with ETSU that provides the manpower, that keeps the economic engine running within our healthcare system, provides the resources for the care that we are intending to promote in our rural communities, is vastly important to all of the communities that we're serving. And as we change the mode of delivery of healthcare, those resources will become more valuable and more important to us, and we hope that it's a development of individuals within our own communities that recognize the opportunity for employment within the healthcare arena, so that they will stay locally, go to our local college, and then work in our local facilities.
Has an economic impact study been done on this merger? What will it might likely mean to this region as far as new jobs, new possibilities? Has anyone put a dollar figure on that?
There will be some economic analysis done as part of the process. Let me, let me also say, I think it's important in terms of context, the status quo, and this sort of talks to the prior question also, the status quo isn't gonna stay, it is, it's not sustainable. We're in an environment where systems our size are being acquired by large multi-state systems. That's a fact, and that's not gonna change. So, the status quo isn't, you can't compare the merger with the status quo, because the status quo's not gonna occur. If, I dare say that if, if this merger were not occurring, you could have one or both systems end up joining these larger out-of-state, out-of-state multi-state systems. So, the question isn't, what does it look like today versus what the merger looks like? The question is, what does the job environment look like if we merge versus if we're both acquired by out-of-state systems? And just to give you order of magnitude, you know, our corporate functions, our administrative functions at Mountain States Health Alliance has more than 600 jobs, when you consider our back-office functions and administrative functions that, and again, my background, I actually was in the business of acquiring hospitals before, and the first thing you do is eliminate those jobs. I mean, that's the way, that's how they get their incremental gain from the acquisition. So, if both Wellmont and Mountain States were to, were to be sold or to merge with out-of-state, multi-hospital, multi-state systems, you're looking at, I'm gonna guess, this is, please don't hold me to this number, but just, my guess is, you're probably talking about potentially 1,000 jobs that would be gone. And so, that's the comparison. And do I think that you bring these two systems together, you end up with some administrative synergies? Sure, of course. But that is a far, far preferable model to losing local governance, losing all of those local administrative and support jobs, and then not having the synergy stay local. Keep in mind, if these systems were to join out-of-state, multi-hospital, multi-state systems, all of the synergies, and make no mistake, the goal of those systems is to protect their balance sheet, not our community. And so, their objective is to optimize the return on their investment in acquiring these hospitals. Where does all, where do all those synergies go in that environment? They go back to that corporate structure. They don't stay here. And so, that's what we're comparing this to, and that's, when our Boards looked at this, and I don't wanna speak for the Wellmont Board, because I'm not qualified to, but I can speak for mine, and I know that the Mountain States Board is deeply committed to making sure that people who make these decisions are people that grew up here, that go to church here, that, whose kids go to school with your kids, and so that when they make a decision that's tough, they live with the consequences of that decision, instead of somebody from, somebody barking out orders from another state, because all they're looking at is a balance sheet and a pro forma. And so, this is a very big deal, and it's, this local governance is a very big issue and a very big concern for our system.
There was a letter, and I'm sure you all read it today, there was a letter to the editor in the Johnson City Press, from Francis Billy Seals of Johnson City, who is the President of the Tennessee Nurses Association. She asked, "Will this merger maintain a quality competent nursing staff that is essential to top-quality clinical outcomes?"
One of the stated objectives in our term sheet going forward is to be one of the best employers with the highest quality of care in the nation, and I think that speaks volumes for the direction that the Board wants to take the merged entity in, and we certainly do intend to have the highest quality that we can possibly obtain, as well as the strongest nursing staff to take care of the patients of our region.
How do you, how can you assure folks sitting here in the audience and everybody that uses your system, if it becomes a combined system, that it is quality of care, not necessarily cost, that you're most concerned with? What can you do to relieve their fears that perhaps somebody is going to be worrying about the bottom line and not necessarily the quality of care?
First of all, probably the most important consideration is, these are our neighbors that we're taking care of. We live here. This is our home, and I'm looking at a doctor in the audience that lives right behind me. And so, I mean, I see these people in the grocery store, so the quality of care is critically important, but let's not, let's not ignore how important cost is, because, let's draw the, let's connect the dots here. The higher the costs are, the people paying those costs, not, set aside the taxpayers, because the taxpayers end up paying the cost when we're not efficient, but the employers in this region who are fighting every day to try to grow jobs, Eastman, Food City, Strongwell, up in Bristol, you go, the list goes on, NN, who's here in Johnson City, trying to grow jobs, the worst thing we can do is create an environment where healthcare costs consume their resources. And so, doing everything we can to reduce the cost structure, that doesn't come at the expense of quality, frankly, they go hand-in-hand. Lower cost and higher quality actually are very synonymous, and the people that benefit are, number one, the patients that we serve, the doctors who are trying to serve them, but also the employers who are struggling to pay. This year in Tennessee, the cost of exchange insurance coverage is going up 30-plus percent. The premium increases that have been proposed are more than 30%. In Virginia, more than 14%. People cannot afford this anymore, and we've gotta find ways to think differently about reducing cost, or people are gonna, it's gonna cost jobs. And so, that's a critical factor for us.
And Alan, you may wanna talk a little bit, not only of quality of care, but access to care. One of the challenges that we face within the region because of scale is there are many procedures, many elements of prevention, things that we have to look to service providers outside of East Tennessee. Think of the number of your family who've had to travel to Vanderbilt, who've had to travel to Wake Forest for care that's not available here, because we do not have the subspecialists. By investing locally, by bringing the scale together, you'll see us be able to train subspecialists who can then move into an employment position in the unified health system, which then allows things from transplants on down the line to be provided here in the tri-cities, and will not have to spend the time traveling to Vanderbilt, to Wake Forest, or to other providers for specialty care that's not available here at home.
Earlier, when we were talking about competition, I think one of the, one of the panelists mentioned something about this will allow the new, the new combined system to devote more care to, to mental, mental health care, senior care, I would assume. to mental health care, senior care, I would assume, also. That, is that in the form of beds? And will there be existing hospitals now that are, that those beds might be converted to some of those specialties, some of those cares?
Again, one aspect of that question, we haven't been able to address yet, and that's, that is the services and the location of services, but we believe at the present time that we will need all of the resources that we currently have. They may need to be reworked or repurposed for the four principles that are outlined in the COPA application itself that the state will be supervising, and that is increased services, increased access to care, lower costs, and addressing the health of the population. So those four principles will be woven into the application, and we will be held accountable for the results of the activity there.
But under Medicare now, with the new rules or the regulations we have now, particularly under the Affordable Care Act, the idea of keeping patients in a general hospital like they used to do in the old days, that's not what hospitals are being asked to do. They're not being, they're not being given the incentives to do that. They're actually being, the idea is fewer people in those beds. What, I mean, obviously, that's going to be a big topic down the road.
That's correct. It's a topic that we're facing today, but will continue to grow in magnitude over time, and that is just the changing healthcare environment, the changing focus that Medicare or the other insurance agencies place upon taking care of the patient in the most appropriate location. But in addition to that, there's also the added challenge to meet some of those healthcare issues head-on and take care of them in the outpatient setting or in the physician's office, thereby preventing the need for the patient to ultimately end up in the hospital and be taken care of there. We want to have the best resources that we possibly can at the hospital level to take care of those patients who need them when they reach that level. But ultimately, we would all be better off if we prevented that illness or injury from occurring in the first place by preventive care and by primary care in the appropriate physician office setting.
Another question from Twitter. "A lot of the projected savings of a merger assume that no changes in the payment of our hospital, to payment to our hospitals receives. What assurance do we," and this sounds like it came from somebody that works at one of the hospitals, "what assurance do we have that the state regulators won't eliminate those savings by reducing payment once the merger occurs?" I guess that's kind of what I asked before, but...
Well, the...
In other words, they're asking, and I'm sorry, they're asking, what assurances do they have that state regulators won't eliminate whatever savings you might, you might can see down the road by reducing the payments that the hospitals or the health system receives after the merger?
We'd love it if the state would guarantee they won't reduce our payments. I don't think that...
No, I meant, I meant changing the payment the other way.
Well, that's part of what's happening now, is, you know, here's what's really unfair about the current payment system. Our region, and a lot of people don't realize this, our region here in northeast Tennessee and southwest Virginia has the second lowest wage index in the United States of America. So a patient, so for instance, a patient here that's admitted to our hospital, that's paid, let's say we're paid $1,000. That same patient who goes to a hospital in Boston, that hospital's paid about $1,700 for the same patient. And that wage index affects how, not just the hospitals get paid, but how doctors get paid. And what's happened is, it creates a real disparity. In other words, our wage index is basically what, it's a .74. If the index is 1, our payment is adjusted down by .74, whereas other parts of the country, like in California, in New York, in Massachusetts, they're getting like 1.4, 1.5. I know that's very technical, but what that means to us, for the exact same patients, we get paid substantially less than hospital systems that are based elsewhere. Now, so we get penalized as it goes today because of just where we're located. And so we're trying hard to address that issue in Washington. We've been lobbying hard on it. I don't anticipate it'll change anytime in the next 12 to 24 months, but we're working on it because we think it would make us more competitive nationally to recruit doctors if the payment system was more fair. But we wish we could guarantee that payments would be guaranteed, but they're not. Medicare's been cutting, and a lot of our private payers, a lot of the commercial payers, they're linked to Medicare. So as Medicare goes, a lot of the private payers do the same thing. So we think, really, it boils down to this. One model of the future is that we're acquired by out-of-state, multi-state systems where pricing goes up, and the way we sustain our ability to create a cash flow margin is to drive up pricing. Another model is to collaborate together and try to eliminate unnecessary costs and agree through a COPA that there will be reasonable limits on what the pricing can be. And therefore, in order to sustain our margins, we have to become more efficient. And we think, and by the way, the employer community has come out very favorably in support of the proposal that we've put forward because they see the same thing that we're talking about.
There's a couple of questions from patients or not, consumers of both your health systems. They want to know how their medical, and I know this sounds kind of minute, but it is the kind of thing that people that actually go, that are in care now worry about. If I'm a patient at Wellmont, but I go to a Mountain States facility or vice versa, will my history, medical history follow me? How is that going to happen?
A couple of the wonderful aspects of our plans going forward are to have a common platform for medical records so that the information will be shared across our healthcare system. So there would be no loss of information or lapse of information in a patient going from one location to the other. The other positive aspect of bringing our two systems together is that presently, there are limitations on some of the physicians who cover from one location to the other, and it actually increases patient choice. To be able to go to the facility of their choice, the physician can go to the facility of their choice to take care of the patient. So we're trying to increase, increase access, increase choice, and have a common medical record across the health system.
One of the things in your letter to apply for a COPA, you described the, I guess, the governing board of the, of the structure under the cooperative agreement. Now, let me make sure I understand this. In the letter, does this mean, is this the governing body that will oversee things from this point on in the, in the COPA process and in the, in guiding us to the merger? And will this still be the same governing board makeup? Will that still be there if the COPA is approved? You see what I'm trying to say?
Right.
And does anybody there got, I can read it off, but I can't see...
Part of, part of the current structure that has grown out of the term sheet that was originally signed and announced in April is a joint board task force, which is an equal number of representatives from both Mountain States and Wellmont, six, Alan Levine and myself. And then in, and this board is actually working now overseeing the work of several committees that are underway and helping us through the merger process. At the time that the COPA application is filed and is ruled on by the state, the proposal is that a new board would be convened that would be responsible for the merged entity going forward. That new board would have, the intention at this point in time is the same representatives that are making up the joint board task force would be part of the new board going forward, but there are two independent and unrelated positions associated with that, too. Dr. Nolan is a, is a member of that board going forward as well. So the board grows and constitutes itself as, as time goes forward and the COPA is actually approved.
Now, what will this new entity be called? Have you decided how you're going to go about selecting a name? Will the public have any kind of say in that?
We have, actually, the joint board task force has engaged at the recommendation of the Integration Council, which is another group of folks who are helping us with the merger process, a firm to help with the creating and crafting of a name, a new name for the new organization as it goes forward. And we are told at this point, although we haven't really started the process, that there is going to be ample time for the public to have input into that, that process.
May I, may I add something to bark? Two things that the boards did early on, which was very smart, by the way, I see one of the board members here, I think that's Roger Leonard sitting back there, and the boards agreed early on to have an outside firm come in and conduct a culture audit of both systems. We had one organization named Accord, which is a national leader in board, in not-for-profit system governance, and another is called the Hay Group, which is a very well-respected national organization that does a lot of this type of work, evaluate both the culture on the boards as well as the culture of both systems. Because the number one thing that can destroy a merger is culture. And you know what was amazing, what we found out? When you, when you talk to physicians, team members, the people, the caregivers, the people who make us operate, the people who take care of patients, there is very little difference between our two organizations. These are the same people that grew up together, go to school together, and they care deeply about going to work and taking care of patients. And what we found at the board level was very little difference in the two boards, a lot of passion for the mission of both systems. And what we did was, we said, "All right, if we're going to create a new board, we want to make sure we follow the best practices in governance nationally. We want the, all the evidence." And irrespective of what that evidence says, both boards are willing to go there. And we just spent, actually, we had planned four meetings to go over these proposed bylaws for the new board as we're negotiating what the bylaws for the new board would look like. And it only took two meetings because we took the best practices and almost literally adopted all of the best practices that the evidence has shown lead to the best practice governance. So if you look at the vision statement that was, that was adopted, one of the things that's in that vision statement is we want the best practice governance, and we want to make sure the cultures mesh. And the board, the first thing both boards did was said, "Let's make sure those things happen." And they did. And so I think we're getting off to a phenomenally good start in terms of governance and culture.
Well, let's talk about culture for a moment, and that's kind of related to this question. Patty on Facebook wants to know, "Will doctors who left Mountain States be returning to practice at Johnson City Medical Center and vice versa?"
I didn't hear the first part.
I'm sorry. "Will doctors who left Mountain States be returning to practice at Johnson City Medical Center and vice versa?"
For the most part, physician preference of practice location is really a personal preference. Certainly, there are needs that we have where we have to move physicians around, but can't speak for Mountain States, but I know within the Wellmont Health System, we do ask our physicians to go to different locations where there are times of need or services that need to be provided that aren't located in those markets. But as far as, so what we talked about before, as far as lifting the limitation that we presently have imposed on some of our physicians from being able to practice at location to location between Mountain States and Wellmont, that would be eliminated under the merger process.
That's an important point. There are physicians today that are right here in Johnson City that cannot practice at the med center, and it's for purely, frankly, competitive reasons. The competition has actually limited patient choice. Our plan is to go to the medical staff of Johnson City Medical Center upon the conclusion or the closure of the merger, and to ask the medical staff to reopen the medical staff so that those physicians who are here can then begin to practice at the med center again. And there'd be no limitations, whether you're employed or independent, there'd be no limitations on where you can practice. It really would boil down to patient choice.
There's a couple of questions about Crest Point. And that's, they want to know what will happen to Crest Point Insurance as a result of this merger. Can you comment on that?
I can't comment on that right now. I think that's, that's an issue better left for later, but we're, we're taking very good care of the patients that have selected Crest Point as their insurance provider, and we're going to continue to do that for, as far as the eye can see.
Well, the, what role do you see the regulators playing in actually deciding the COPA based on, I don't know what is a better word, side businesses like Crest Point and other things that maybe, I don't know what, Wellmont may have similar situations there. Will they look into that, those other means of revenue when they're considering your COPA?
I think it's best that we don't speculate on that. I think that's a regulatory process when you let them...
Oh, come on, just a little bit, just a little...
Not even a little bit.
Nobody's listening.
You must be a journalist.
Yes. How much has the Affordable Care Act played, also played, in where we are at today as far as you two healthcare systems deciding you're better together? Has that played a role in anything, and will it play a role down the road as far as determine outcomes of care and that kind of thing?
Well, we could break that down into two, two different sections, and one would be the Affordable Care Act, which is actually intended to provide access to coverage for individuals who heretofore were not covered. And we could also talk about the expansion of Medicaid, both in Tennessee and Virginia. And unfortunately, both of our states have not yet taken that step, which would broaden the coverage eligibility for individuals in our region. And in particular, our region, we felt like would be a very positive move for people to have additional access to care. But there are, there are more individuals covered because of the Affordable Care Act. I think Alan mentioned earlier in the discussion that what's disappointing to us now is the rate of increase that are being approved for those plans going forward. For the people who have not been able to afford care in the first place, it just makes it that much more difficult upon their next go-round when the insurance premiums are increased upon their plans going forward. So a lot yet, a lot of work yet to be done with the Affordable Care Act. And, you know, if you follow the congressional agenda, every day, there is a new healthcare topic of some sort that hits one of the committees, and so we're constantly under the watchful eye of Congress and the decisions and challenges and choices that they're making.
So let me get this one, and one more thing on the COPA, and I've got one more question from Twitter, I think that, I think you all would want to answer, but if the COPA is approved by both Tennessee and the Virginia regulatory agencies, and there is, let's just say that there are folks who are not happy with the plan you've put forward as far as being together, do they have any relief? Is there any relief? Is there any way that someone can petition a higher power?
I believe that the law provides for the ability for people to express their opposition and to oppose the final approval of the COPA. There's a, there's a legal process that was put in place by the legislature, certainly.
That process can, is there any specifics about that? What, do they have to file litigation? What, what is, what's the process?
Well, there's, if there's a public process, I think the state is actually going to put together a, an advisory committee to take input. So I think there is going to be opportunity for people to express support and opposition. I know there was a hearing today, in fact, in the state senate in Tennessee on the rule itself, where the Department of Health presented their rule and defended each aspect of the rule in front of the state senate's healthcare committee. And it was obviously a public process. So I don't, I do think there's going to be plenty of opportunity for people to express concerns, and I think in events like this where we can hear concerns so that we can certainly engage, we want to do the right thing. And so we want to hear if people have concerns so we could address those concerns with the regulators. And then certainly, there's a legal process that I think people can engage in if they want to stop it. At some point, though, we have to move forward because we've, time is important here.
And this is the first of its kind in Tennessee, correct? This is the first. Have you heard that there's other communities where this is being discussed, or maybe a merger of some kind of healthcare entities or something to that effect?
Specifically in Tennessee, I'm not aware of any others that are, that are currently in that same mindset, but I will say, one of the, one of the hugely exciting components that we have about the process that we're undertaking and the goals that we're attempting to accomplish is that we are being watched nationally. This is, this is a highly visible process, something that a lot of communities all across the country are interested in pursuing in one way or another. And so the, the process that we're undergoing and the outcome that we hope to achieve is definitely something that's on the national forefront.
And one last question from Twitter. "In addition to research growth, what other opportunities exist for education as a result of this merger?" I know you mentioned specialties. I know you mentioned specialties. What other opportunities?
Well, I think, first of all, Dr. Nolan talked about some of that in terms of expanding our opportunity for subspecialists and training of subspecialists. I think, and it's not just physician training. I mean, we participate in enormous training opportunities for allied health professionals. So I think there's all kinds of those opportunities. I also think from a public health standpoint, as Bart said, no other health system that I've seen has done what we're talking about doing. And I think a lot of students that are at ETSU, LMU, King, other schools, Milligan, other schools and universities in this area have an opportunity from a public health standpoint to participate in the outreach initiatives we're going to be doing to improve the overall public health of the region. I mentioned earlier identifying the causal factors for diabetes. Well, once we figure that out and we're able to deploy interventions in the community, there's going to be tremendous learning opportunity from that. Let me say this one last thing. It would be, there's no question, it would be a lot easier for Wellmont and Mountain States to do what most other hospitals have done. It would be a lot easier to consummate a transaction with a multi-state system at all levels, from a regulatory standpoint, from an administrative standpoint. It is a lot easier to do what most of those other hospitals have done. The path we've chosen is a much harder path, but we believe the end result is worth it. If we can demonstrate, and as Bart said, this is being watched nationally, and this will be studied, what we're doing, but if we're able to demonstrate that this is an effective way of moving resources from waiting until people get sick before we start spending money and actually taking the savings from the synergies and investing in preventing illness before it occurs, you're going to see other systems learn from this. And hopefully, you know, we'll make mistakes along the way, and they can learn from those, too. But we hope this is something people can learn from in other parts of the country, particularly in rural areas, where we can redeploy resources properly instead of just waiting until people get sick and then money starts hitting spend.
We've got a...
I also think there's the preventative aspect of it. As you examine the population health challenges that face this region, there are things about East Tennessee, things about Appalachia that are unique, one of which is the significant number of children who are born addicted to substances. If you've had a chance at all to go to Nice-Wonger and see infants going through neonatal abstinence, watch them going through withdrawal. We have faculty on this campus, Dr. Rob Pack leads an interdisciplinary team that's received a multimillion dollar NIH grant to focus on fighting prescription drug abuse, to focus on neonatal abstinence syndrome. Our ability to take the resources from the synergies and double down on the population health challenges that face the region, we may not be able to see the impact of that one year from now, five years from now, 10 years from now, but 15 and 20 years from now, this will be a better place to live, and our children will have brighter futures because of the investments that will be made through this merger.
We've got just a few minutes left, and I'm going to give you each a chance to say very briefly why you think this merger should go forward. I'll start with you, Dr. Nolan.
Well, once again, I want to thank the Johnson City Press for the opportunity to host this forum on campus. The path that has been chosen is the most difficult path, and that's the path of partnership. That's a path that we as an institution are pursuing, not only here, but in Kingsport, in Bristol, and in Johnson City. That path of partnership defines who we are as an institution and who we've been as an institution since our founding 104 years ago. The partnership that you see here today is genuine, and it's a partnership that's focused on improving the life of the people of this region. I firmly, firmly believe that you will see improvements across the board five to 10 years from now in population health outcomes because of the creativity and the ingenuity of our faculty and of our students that will downstream be employed by the new system. I only have Ron where Crest, Alan and Bart were talking about the name, and they're not there yet. I do trust that the colors of the new company will be blue and gold.
Mr. Levine?
Let me come with a price. You know, my favorite proverb is 2918, "Where there is no vision, the people perish." It would be a lot easier to throw up the white flag and do what a lot of other hospital systems have done and said, it's a lot easier just to sell and to let somebody else solve these problems, or let somebody else make the tough decisions that we know need to be made in the future. I don't know any stronger way to tip my hat to the boards of directors of both Mountain States and Wellmont. This was not an easy decision to make when you consider the history, the passion each system and its constituencies have towards the systems, the pride that each community has towards their hospitals, which they should and they will continue to have going forward. It was a hard decision. But actually, when you step back and you consider, okay, we could throw up the white flag, or we could do what's harder today, but we know we'll end with a better result, I tip my hats to them because they made the right decision. Now, it's a harder decision. It's hard for us. It's a very difficult process. A lot of very difficult decisions lie ahead. But the reality is, those decisions are going to be made by and supported by and approved by and communicated by people who live here that you know, and hopefully that you'll, if you don't trust today, you'll over time trust that they do have the best intentions for this region in mind, not just the balance sheet of the hospitals, but the region. This is the place where their children and grandchildren are going to grow up. And no system outside this region can possibly make that claim. So we don't ask you to trust us. We ask you to engage with us. We have to earn your trust going forward. We have to do that every day. We're going to continue to work to do that. But you have two boards that are deeply committed to us doing the right thing, and I stand by the decision they made, and I believe it's the right decision.
Mr. Hove?
We're very excited about the new approach and bringing forward the new approach that we've envisioned for healthcare. And we're also extremely pleased with the amount of community support that has been generated through our businesses, our chambers of commerce, our elected leaders, even the state leaders who always ask, how is the merger process coming along? They're always interested in exploring ideas with us to help make this a better location for business and community going forward. Like I said earlier, we know we are a large employer. We don't take that lightly. It's extremely important for us to be very cautious and complimentary as we make our approach going forward, to be doing the right thing for the community. And we do all live in the community, and we go to church in the community, and we look to our neighbors and want to make sure that we are making the right decisions going forward. And last but not least, we're excited about the momentum that we've had going forward and how the synergies exist in the cultural surveys that we've had, how close we are together, and the ability to work together that we have recognized over the short period of time that we've been pursuing this path. So we're looking forward with great excitement as to what the future holds for the health of our region and the economy of our region, and we look forward to being a major player in that.
Thank you. I want to thank the panel for being here tonight. Give them a little round of applause, please. I also want to thank all of you for being here tonight. If we had so much fun, we might do it again. Thank you and good night.